Oh, come on, Bill. You're not supposed to join in there when I'm not.
You're speaking on the motion.
No, no, it's fair. Me?
Yes.
Oh, it's essentially level funding with municipality increases with the action council office.
Thank you, Madam President.
I would.
Sorry. Oh, please, Councilor.
I would. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'd just like to note real quick, on the city council line, there's no increase in pay. That's two years gone by, and more than we can front page of the Patriot Legion of Quincy Sun tomorrow, that there is no increase for all city council over the last two years. Just to make that note, that the opinion's out there, we've gotten no raise. So, I just want to make that note up here tonight. That's a very important, since I've been in council, I've had no raise. Thank you, ladies.
Thank you very much, our Councilor, and then Councilor Palucci.
Yes, if I could, I would like to add a line that is zero funded to the budget for the position of legal counsel, which I believe we are technically able to do, because we're not adding any money. We're simply adding a line to the policy document for legal counsel.
So you put that in the form of a motion?
Put that in the form of a...
Okay, on that motion, Councilor.
On the motion, well, I absolutely support the position. I would feel a bit of a hypocrite, Councilor Palucci, if you and I support that, because we have said, where's the ordinance to create a position? And the ordinance must follow the line item. So, how could we do that? We have very much time and time again said, put it in the budget, you know, ordinance. So, I will not support that. I do support the position. I would welcome you to bring that in in the form of an ordinance, but I would feel quite hypocrite, because we did that last year with each line in the budget and look for the ordinance. So, I cannot support your amendment. But, we definitely have benefited from having particular Mr. Shea's assistance on and off of all of our land as a position agreement. So, I most definitely see the need for the position. However, from the technical, policy side, policy document side of things, correct procedures, what we need. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
If I could, in response to that, you're somewhat right, in that we were right in what we said previously.
Close enough by once.
Yeah, no, but I would simply suggest two things. First is, there is ordinance that covers existing positions of legal counsel. So, all we would be doing is adding the same position here. And the position exists in the solicitor's office budget for legal counsel. So, the debate that we, and I completely understand what you're saying. The Councilman is, you know, he's the king of this issue. But it's that you need to have an ordinance so that people have a job description. You know what your responsibilities are. You know, there's supposed to be 100% charge of traffic. You know that. And it's in the ordinance that know what debate about who's in charge of what. So, in this particular instance, we do have, we do have ordinances or job descriptions that would be governed by ordinance. So, I think that should alleviate that concern, you're securing your vote for this. And then secondly, this council has several agents voting by way of resolution to have that added. We set those resolutions in the morning, and it was not added. We really have no other opportunity to do this without adding a line. I mean, we don't get a legal counsel because we have a line. You know, we don't get an attorney for the counsel because we have a line. But I think it furtheres that debate, because then next year, arguably, it would appear in the budget, hopefully funded or zero funded, we can have that debate. But, I think it's important, we've gotten tremendous amount of value from the council, as anyone who's been on the council knows, in our dealings with Attorney Jim Shea. There has been instances where we need separate legal advice, because we are a separate entity under the charter. And I think that this very simply sends a message that the council should have this law, should have this position available to it. You know, it's up to the mayor if funded or not funded. That's on, you know, that's a debate for another day. But all that I'm asking for this amendment is that we, as a body, say, it makes sense for the city council to have access to their own order.
Okay, so motion on the floor is to essentially amend the city council budget to reflect a line item that would call itself legal counsel. Right, so, any further discussion on the motion? Now I'm glad to call it all.
Councilor King. Councilor Debona.
Yes.
Councilor Harris.
Yes.
Councilor Hughes.
Yes.
Councilor LaFars.
No.
Councilor Leanne.
Yes.
Councilor Palucci.
Yes.
Chairman Crowe.
Yes. Motion, that's six to one. All right, we also have a motion pending on the floor to move approval on the budget and discussion.
I just want to thank, I just want to thank all of the council staff, who on a daily basis does an amazing job, fielding calls, triaging, doing mailings. Also included in this budget is our city auditor, who does a phenomenal job for us and answers everything when asked and returns it with perfect order. So, on behalf of the council, because, you know, in the interest of brevity, I will, I know they all want to thank you, but they don't want to take that extensive time to do it. But I want to extend my thanks to you, to, of course, to Jen Manning, and our entire council staff, and Alexander, Kathy Moon, and just thank everyone for the wonderful day work, wonderful work they do. Thank you.
Madam President, just a quick, totally integral aside, Susan, you've been very helpful to me, obviously taking over this committee, which has certainly been interesting. It's been a pleasure to work with, so, thank you. Now I'm glad to, please call it all.
Councilor King. Councilor Debona.
Yes.
Councilor Harris.
Yes.
Councilor Hughes.
Yes.
Councilor LaFars.
Yes.
Councilor Leanne.
Yes.
Councilor Palucci.
Yes.
Chairman Crowe.
Yes. Seven members voting in for the budget. Next item on the agenda is the staffers department.
Good evening, Congress. I am joined today with Board Member John Moll in his running. I would like to invite any of you here to support as we strive to strengthen customer support and increase public satisfaction of the asset location in the assessors department. This council last year supported us with the necessary funding to streamline work flow through advancing existing technology, improving procedures, and reducing man hours and tax dollars spent. I've enjoyed working with each of you and look forward to working together in the new fiscal year. The assessors' office is crucial to the city's operations. We keep an eye on how to enable the car to renovate the major roadways during construction. The assessors are responsible for evaluating 27,000 parts of the real estate, whether it be residential, commercial, industrial, or personal property. In addition, the department is responsible for administering over 74,000 bills from mortgage collectives along with load excise and administering all state tax property exemptions. As a reminder to this body, the assessors department generates 75% of the total revenue to the city. The assessors' office is constantly in discussion with the public, working daily with inquiries of taxpayers, planners, developers, builders, and real estate professionals. This department is responsible for preparing cases for hearings and defending the city's property values before the Massachusetts appellate tax court. Preparing for cases that involve hiring an appraiser to perform an outside appraisal on a subject property, in addition to the countless hours spent in preparation for the hearing. The assessors each year schedule a revaluation process from private to local communal to achieve a steady tax base for future fiscal planning in the city. Without a steady tax base, it can be difficult predicting future projects and investments. Fiscal year 2018 is a revaluation year after the city of Quincy. This occurs every five years and is an extensive audit by the Massachusetts Department of Revenue. The city of Quincy continues to see a positive sign for growth in new investment. Factors such as improved economic conditions, increasing price levels, reversal of depreciating environmental trends, and improved infrastructure and transportation facilities have attributed to this growth. However, the hard work and dedication of this council and our mayor must also be recognized as each of you has played a vital role to the evaluation of Quincy. The board is striving to keep the assessors department at heart through implementing new strategies, revamping the agency policy, and improving technology as we further modernize the department. The assessors' department historically relied upon, heavily relied upon contracted work in all areas of the department. Our goal as the board is to continue increasing in-house capabilities throughout the office, specifically in data collection and evaluation. Last year, this government body approved the position of a methodologist appraiser, which allowed the board to eliminate the past practice of hiring these contractors. This position ensures quality data control while maintaining satisfaction of their taxation. With bringing a data collection in-house, the assessors for the first time in 30 years entered all abatement observations within a stated mandate of time period without requesting an extension of taxes. This task force, the board voluntarily reached out to the Massachusetts Department of Revenue to implement a program. This program provides free consultants from cities to towns to improve their financial management operations. Due to the number of commercial and industrial properties in these, this department was highly advised to hire an in-house commercial assessor. A full-time commercial assessor continued our goal of reducing contracted work, ultimately resulting in a reduction of tax dollars spent. When the assessors use this term "commercial," we are also referring to departments which use industrial and industrial projects. The city of Quincy is expanding its tremendous amount of growth with additional development. An impressive statistic to share is Quincy ranked fourth in commercial and industrial new growth in fiscal year 2017. I would like to point out that the three communities ranked higher than Quincy all have full-time commercial assessors. Quincy also competes in other areas, as we rank in the top 10 out of 351 municipalities in the state in nearly all valuation categories. I respect your request to each of you when reading through the assessors department budget. You kindly remember this department is responsible for 75% of the total revenue for the city. Any additional monies requested are for sole purposes of integrating new ideas and technologies to further improve the operation and revenue to the city.
Thank you. Yeah, I'll move approval, and just in support of the budget, calling you doing an excellent job. I think you, your efforts to modernize and professionalize the department. How long you been in the job, for two years?
I've been the chairperson for one.
One?
Yeah.
Okay. But it's coming through, you know, I mean, that stuff starts internally, and I think it takes some time before it gets reflected externally, where people's perhaps opinions about how accessible the department change. And I think you've kind of hit that mark, where you've started to turn the corner with the department. And the efforts that you've made have really led to a more accessible department. When I hear people, I tell them, when people call me with questions about abatements or some of the programs that the city operates, tell them to call you directly, your department directly, to answer questions, because I don't want to screw something up and tell them to get a tax break because they aren't.
Right.
That's the worst case scenario, right? So, I don't think about misinformation, it's relatively complex stuff. And then folks will call me back and say, oh, they were just so nice. And even when you can't help them out, they're happy that they got the answers. They understand the process better. So, kudos to you and the folks in your department, you're certainly doing a great job. Keep up the good work.
Thank you.
I move approval. On the motion, calling, I just heard that statistic that you put out there. Quincy ranks four in net new commercial growth.
Quincy ranked four out of 351 municipalities in commercial and industrial new growth. And actually, another statistic that is definitely impressive, as a percentage change from FY '16 to FY '17, we actually ranked number two, right behind Boston.
I know.
Right behind Boston, as a percentage change, you know, meaning, you know, the new growth number in FY '17 over FY '16.
Where predominantly is it taking? I think sometimes, you know, we get wrapped up in seeing all the residential, we're at the zoning board, reflecting what a lot of the applications come forward out for residential. Where is the actual growth part?
So, remember that growth is when you have new tax dollars, meaning you have new improvements, or if, you know, you have new renovations. That is growth. The value is increasing, is reflective of the market. But new growth is different, like I say, the aspect is, it's new tax dollars. It's new to the tax dollars, new improvements. Predominantly, we are seeing a lot of the new growth in the residential class. But we do still have commercial new growth as well. It's just the market is dictating the new growth in the residential class, meaning these, you know, condo complexes, these large apartment buildings. You know, but on a lot of the projects that we do have going on, there is the, you know, the mixed-use aspect, that there is going to be, you know, an allocation of square footage in these projects dedicated to strictly commercial.
So that takes into account what's currently necessarily built. That's the statistic of, from the forms that come on?
No, that's, that's, that's...
That's already paying taxes.
That's in FY '17's data, correct.
So that would be reflective of, I own a commercial space, I do a huge renovation.
Correct.
Now, obviously, the properties are big more, right?
Correct.
They're paying more taxes, because of the valuation, you know?
Right, and it's good to, it's good to look at that, where we rank fourth in commercial and industrial new growth out of 351 municipalities. You know, that's a strong statistic that we are still seeing growth in commercial and industrial. It's just, you know, it's not at the rate we would like to see, but the market is dictating that.
Well, I think we all, certainly not a market expert by any stretch of the night, but my understanding is, right, when residential peaks essentially goes down, it's not something we've got to see commercial turn, right? And there's been, from what I understand, the patient's interest to expand on the commercial footprint throughout the city. So, hoping that that continues to grow, right, because, you know, that we can essentially secure the map pot, takes away from moving people from the residential. That is awesome. Very interesting. So with this addition, I'm assuming your department is in that capacity, you have three assessors and now a commercial appraiser, and a methodologist, so to speak, for the last year.
Right, so, our, the board is trying to establish a long-term plan for the department. And what we're accomplishing is that each board member is responsible for different areas of the department. You know, and with that being said, there's definitely a demand to have a full-time commercial assessor, you know, in the department, with, working alongside the board.
Understood. With the addition, with the approval of this body, and the addition of the commercial appraiser, you're at capacity, correct?
Yes.
So your headcount is, I mean, you touch all the areas of what needs to happen in order to make sure that we're getting, getting records for the residential taxpayers, for the commercial taxpayers.
Yes, yes.
You're, you're good. Any further discussion on the motion? Good. Sina, now I'm glad to, please call it all.
Councilor King. Councilor Debona.
Yes.
Councilor Harris.
Yes.
Councilor Hughes.
Yes.
Councilor LaFars.
Yes.
Councilor Leanne.
Yes.
Councilor Palucci.
Yes.
Chairman Crowe.
Yes. Seven members voting in for the firm, that is daily.
Thank you.
Council, next item on the agenda is the purchasing department. Any more soled?
Motion to approve.
Motion on the floor to approve. Any discussion on the motion? Sina, now I'm glad to, please call it all.
Councilor Debona.
Yes.
Councilor Harris. Councilor Hughes.
Yes.
Councilor LaFars.
Yes.
Councilor Leanne.
Yes.
Councilor Palucci.
Yes.
Chairman Crowe.
Yes. Pretty easy.
Excellent job.
Next item on the agenda is my favorite departments, the inspectional services. Welcome, Mr. Duke. Tremendous asset to the city of Quincy, one of the toughest jobs in the city.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Inspection services consists of seven departments, building, plumbing, wiring. Together, we ensure that buildings throughout the city are safe or occupied by residents. We also have our zoning department, conservation division, which protects 31 miles of coastline and wetlands that we have in the city. We have weights and measures department, which ensures that all our scales and supermarkets and gas stations are accurate, so that our consumers are paying a fair and accurate price for goods and services. And we have our code enforcement and code compliance officer. Code enforcement, we deal with approximately 1,700 complaints a year and take appropriate enforcement action where necessary. So we have to answer...
Any questions for Commissioner and Councilor?
I move approval, but I want to turn to the President.
Thank you very much, Chairman Crowe. I, and then the Councilor Palucci, I just want to say, that, I mean, obviously, and I think I speak for pretty much everyone up here, that inspectional services is really one of the hardest-working departments in the city. And you do a phenomenal job leading it, as does everyone who works under you. I am going to, if Jay says he needs it, I think his money, anyway, on the budget, and actually in all fronts, so I'm going to vote for your budget. But I do want to ask you something while I have you here, regarding something that folks have been talking to me about. I have called you once, sometimes I know other councils have problems with it. And it's the light issue, not the blight, in the way that I know Counselor LaFars probably wants to talk about, but parking on front lawns, a huge problem in some areas, particularly those areas which have multifamily units. And it is truly, it just so, I mean, I couldn't say unneighborly enough, but it's, I think it's one of, one of those undetected lights in the neighborhood that really just jumps up the neighborhood faster than anything. It's hard to catch, it's hard to keep on top of those people, because I know you've gotten several properties that I've called to about, have taken it, talked to folks, and then it continues to happen again. So, you know, I think, thank you for doing that, but I just want people to know that your department does work on that, and I've heard a lot of complaints about that. And I just wanted to ask you, you know, is there something more we could be doing as a city? As, I mean, you already write the tickets, so there's no ordinance you can put in place, it's already there. But it is truly just, I mean, it jumps up the neighborhood faster than anything. And it's one of the hardest things to catch or to correct.
One of the things I'd ask, we should, we could take a look at is, the mean, we look at 40, Mass General Law 40, you being able to place means of property for certain complaints. That would effectively help people from continuing that kind of activity. Because we write, we do write the tickets, and I would recommend that if folks call my department if it's a problem, we'll come out as many times as necessary. But the problem is, you know, you write the tickets, you know, and then collecting the money, and they still continue to back there. So, if we could find a way to hurt them, not hurt them, but...
Let's go ultimate justice. I'm telling you, it's bad.
Something like that might help.
Yeah, no, I, okay, all right. If we can think about maybe doing that, because there are certain homes, certain people that are habitual offenders.
Yes.
And, and you know them, I know them, I'm sure other counselors know them, and they're wards. And it's just, it's dismal, it really is. And just so, it's so hurtful to the neighborhood, and you spend a lot of money keeping up your property, and somebody else has the, you know, just, it's awful. They park in their lawn, they make it look like, like it jumped, it's terrible. It really upsets me, obviously. And, you know, if there's something we can do, again, more of hurtful, as you say, to habitual offenders, I'm all for it.
An analogy, a simple analogy, police when they write a ticket for a vehicle parked in the street, that goes against the registration of the vehicle, eventually that money has to pay.
Right, yeah.
We're not able to do that. So, we have the ticket, it's written against the homeowner, and then it becomes more of a, you know, cat and mouse game to collect the money, so that's a problem.
Thank you, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Jay, a couple things. I agree, you do, and I say this every year, you do more with less than I think any other department does. And I think I'm one of the counselors who's on you quite a bit about doing stuff, but I was trying to take the opportunity to thank you on this day of days. I mean, because you really do more with less than I think any other department does. You have more responsibilities, the responsibilities that you undertake with less staff, less support. So, definitely support the budget, I always support, I always support your budget. Couple things I wanted to talk about. First, we passed that, where we can take any fines that the city levies and attach it as a, onto the tax bill. We passed that, Counselor Cofflin introduced that. So I want to say it was like two, two years ago, so three or four years ago, that 29U or whatever, it's actually always a T, but, so I think we have that in the toolbox. I'm going to check.
I'm going to look into that. And if, even if we did pass that, and I, I don't know that we did, because I did check into it, and it was unclear. Even if we did pass that, we're only able to leave violations that have to do with store or anything that has to do with sanitary code. And that comes from the Mass General Law 40U. Those are the only items, violations, that we could leave. So, any of the other violations are not, are something we could leave.
I mean, perhaps Counselor Hughes was asking if there's any type of legislation that we could, we could pass or work on up here, and perhaps a home rule petition to expand the categories upon which a fine from you turns into a bill that goes on their tax bill, much to be the same analogy. The reason why people end up having to pay those fines is because they need to reregister the vehicle. I think it'd be similar if we started, if we put it on to the, on to the tax. Like, we do, we also have that with the detail work, that we have that the police department uses, where if you have an unruly house, and there's a certain number of calls within a certain number of time, chief of police, the whole process, the chief of police can put a paid police detail in front of the unruly house 24 hours a day to maintain order. That had been used once before, and the detail was put out front, and the guy said, go pound sand, and they sent him a bill. So, we changed that, we changed that since I've been up here, so that that bill can get added to the tax law, so that it can be leaned. So I, I'll have to look into how we can do that with your fines. For my colleagues on that, how it's a home rule petition or whatever. Any more tools that we can give you to do the job?
I would welcome any additional tools that we could use from this point.
Because I think you have said in the past that it's, you know, it's the 1% of the problems that are just repeat problems, repeat problems, that like 99% of the folks with properties, when there's a problem, you send out a notice, it's corrected. It's the 1% that drives us all nuts, drives the residents who live in the neighborhood nuts, the counselors, yourself, but those are the ones that are the problems. So, so I, perhaps, Madam Parker, committees, if you could, let me check into that. It's called 29U?
Uh, 40U.
40U. If you could look into that, it was, while Counselor LaFars were up, and I were on the body, Counselor Cofflin introduced it. Oh, yeah, email the Counselor Cofflin, and on the day, it was a cash. If you could look into that, that'd be super helpful. One other thing I just want to bring up with you, and it's like my new kind of fix-it project. We've discussed this via email, the auto body licenses, right? And how many, how many cars you can have on your site attached to an auto body license? So I know that you guys can count and work for, at my request of how many cars were... Let me take a chance at that. The problem is, you have auto bodies, and I don't want to try to denigrate any industry or anything, but you have auto bodies, and they have maybe 12 parking spaces, right? Or room for 12 cars on their lot. And you go by, and it's like 25 cars, there's cars parked in the street, there's all these, there's all these cars that are just sitting there, they're not moving them, or for whatever reason, they just have their, you drive down Golden Street, look, look at the properties that are, the, I think it's CNL. I'm sorry if it's not CNL. But you look there, and it's essentially a junkyard. There's got to be 60, 70 cars in there. It's just a, it's a giant parking lot of rusted, hulking cars. You look at the, the... You look at the Paul's Auto Lot on Center Street, the whole exterior of the property, including a paper road that's public domain, is covered in old vehicles that are, they don't look like they've been worked on, they're just rusting there. Some without wheels, they're just sitting there, and they've been there for months and months and months and years. It looks terrible, and I have no problem with people making a living, but those cars aren't getting turned around, there's something going on there. People are just being lazy by not junking cars when they have to be junked, or they're keeping cars for spare parts on the lot, which isn't what the lot is intended to be for. So. My concern is that, I guess my question is, I was under the impression that when someone got an auto body license, that they were assigned a certain number of vehicles to the lot. So if I gotta, I want to open up a transmission repair shop, and I have, I don't know, space for like eight cars or something, I would go ask for the license from the licensing board, whatever the authority is. There would be a number assigned to my license, whether or not.
That's correct.
Okay, and so we currently do that?
Currently.
Okay, so now looking back, and I think this is where we ran into some trouble on this project, is going backwards, they didn't always have that, is that the case?
That's correct.
So when some of the properties that you looked at, you had nothing to compare it to, and you said, okay, there's thirty cars there, and I said, all right, what are they allowing? You said, I don't know, because we don't have a number that they were assigned, is that the case?
That's correct, we're capturing any auto body or care that comes before us, now we're capturing and placing a number on it.
Okay, and I mean anyone, and I think one of the, it's same as like the zoning board, one of the things they have to notify the board councillor, and I think only maybe two or three have opened up during my tenure. And I've said in the, it's a huge pet peeve of mine, when, you know, whatever the licensing board gives you, you know, fight for more, but whatever they give you, you have to live by it. So if you can't live by it, then maybe it's not gonna work out, or you have to find alternative locations for cars, but that's, we're gonna hold you to that, to that number. Perhaps, and I was thinking legislatively, maybe I'll talk to the solicitor about this, but perhaps we can retroactively apply a number. So I guess I'd like to just, after you leave tonight, you know, drive it home, think about how we could reasonably, well, how do we currently do it? How do we currently say how many spots you get for, with a license?
We pretty much, we visit the site, we will look at it, what it, what we figure it has existing. We may speak with the board councillor in the area, and we try to come up with a number that works for the applicant, we don't want to cite anybody to fail, but obviously we don't want to have, you know, cars parked everywhere. So it's been working out in that manner, and we always have reserved the right from the licensing board to reduce the number.
Okay, so I guess what I, perhaps we can embark on is a project to put numbers on the ones that don't have numbers on them, and then, you know, be diligent about enforcing those numbers. All right, that's something I'm gonna work on, I'll work with you offline, but that's, I appreciate your answer to the questions.
Thanks Counselor, Counselor Forrest.
Thank you, Counselor, Chairman Crowe. Here's Jay, Jay, you, I've talked to you, I feel like multiple times, multiple times weekly guaranteed, sometimes multiple times daily. We do a lot of, we're always very responsive, whether it's development work, it's been a lot of it, while zoning and conservation, we can fire up there. But in particular, when it comes to a bunch of times, some of the things that I ask for, and we talk about this every year, is the same thing that I mentioned before, as the request, as they command. And Councilor Palmuji made a really good point, listen, ninety-nine percent of the debt is clear, and those markers says do not go away, and the courts are not conducive, you know, they're, they're not hearing us, right? They're not making time for us, but it's still that neighborhood front of frustration, you know, we've got commercial vehicles parked on the sidewalk, commercial vehicles parked on the property, a lot of blighted property, unregistered vehicles. You know, it, like to Counselor Hughes' point, you're taking care of your property, and the next door, you got a, you know, junkyard for a front lawn, stuff here in the neighborhood, and it really brings things down. So I guess it's, I'm curious about what you're doing, I know your code enforcement officer, the same thing, you and I will go through up and down, I know there's five foreclosure on C Street, the problem with blighted properties that we, you know, we've talked about. We know they're existing, we know they're in foreclosure, we know a bank, we're not gonna get anything, it's not gonna allow writing any tickets, we're wasting everybody's time. But if you're not in the ability to answer that blighted property, your frustration has to go away. So tell me about the tools, I know you've gotten the software, the permit software up and running, and is the, some of the tools that you're using to track some of these problem constituent requests? Such as this, you know, blighted property, or the other outstanding violations that, you know, I can think of, one, I just emailed you the other day, I got a call on my Facebook, ninety-one Darrow Street. Yep, this is four unregistered cars in the driveway, and the neighbors want to know, are there still unregistered cars in the driveway? Tell me how you're tracking that workflow to get it to resolution? Is it, hey, complaint comes in, violation issued, and off and goes on to the next one?
A violation comes in, Ken, we'll go, Ken, the code enforcement officer, he'll go out, he'll speak with the property owner. We don't necessarily, we won't write a ticket right off the bat, we try to get compliance, writing a speech of the order or a letter. Some, some of these problems resolve themselves in figure two by garbage out early, you know, so those go away. But when we, when we get a complaint, it's a frequent flyer, it's, you know, saying address, we will write a violation. So that's kind of how we handle it initially, and we track every complaint that comes in with our permitting software, also has a module that does our complaints.
We're paying for that, we're utilizing it, or we can scan input, so Ken goes out to a house, and because, so for example, this, this one on Darrow Street, they had a stop work order, I think he played it, I don't know if the project was there. But, you know, but it's important that the inspectors know, hey, the stop, the permit's pending on this while we're here, there's an outstanding violation matter relative to unregistered vehicles. So I think it's important that as your staff is out there, to wear a dust report problem. And so does that, once Ken puts it in the system, is there kind of like a tickle file that says go back there? Because not necessarily once you spoke to them, because I mean I get results, how was it, what's the follow-up plan?
So every complaint gets logged and tracked. When they get closed, we do a report at least twice a week on all our open complaints. And we have internal meetings and what's going on with, you know, we have close communication, so we're keeping track of all the open complaints. But a lot of them get resolved as a week goes by for one reason or another, and some of them that don't get resolved, depending on the nature of the complaint, we may decide to file for a complaint.
Okay, so. I'd love to see the board one open complaint list, kind of cross-reference it with what I have, as far as what I know that I've been sending over. In particular, some of the blighted properties is something, I know you've pulled this, you know, before, and I've kind of cross-referenced it with a spreadsheet that I personalize, a spreadsheet I keep and glance at here. You're using the tools, because I think it's important that, you know, that address kind of tracks the activity and what's happening, because we've had, it seems today, that more percent seem to have inconsistent problems. Do you know how many violations were issued in the last calendar year, in the last bunch of year, you see of this twice weekly meeting, I'm curious, can you tell us some stats?
I would venture to guess about three hundred actual, three to four hundred actual violations.
So three to four hundred actual violations, but that, that violation could have multiple tickets?
Some of them have multiple tickets, yes. We keep a separate database for the blighted properties.
Okay, so let's be, so. Okay, so let's go off the blighted long term, let's just stay on that, call comes in, you know, unregistered car in driveway, like, you know, kind of some of these other civil violations that aren't as blatant as the light. How is that managed, three or four hundred of those, or more?
Well, the actual violations, I can tell you right are, you know, is the last resort for a rated violation, so that means that most of them get resolved either in a couple of days, like a trash complaint.
But that's, I'm trying to get the total, like, what's the workflow here, how many complaints are coming in, is it not as bad as, as we think, as I feel like?
The workflow is about seventeen hundred complaints, so.
Okay, that's right, whether they are actual complaints, you've got a ticket, I'm just trying to get to, what's the volume coming in?
So, you know, and I don't have, so it's above seventeen hundred complaints we deal with.
The calendar year?
On a half, well, calendar or fiscal year. Most of them get resolved pretty quickly, and then the rest are, get violations, and some of those end up in court.
So three to four hundred of them think get tickets, do we know what we billed last year?
What we billed?
Yeah.
I don't have that information.
I remember when this code enforcement officer position was being pitched, it was, this guy's gonna earn his keep, he's gonna earn his salary, and I'm just looking at the revenues coming in for the civil violations. I believe, and I was gonna say Madam Honor on page thirteen, I'm sorry, page eight of the revenue document, and I was just curious if that correlates with the Inspection Services line, line four on page eight, the civil violations. Would that be his line, because that has zero collected, and I was just seeing where else would that funding be? Where would that revenue be coming in on those tickets?
I believe it's under.
Court?
Yeah.
Fines and porters?
It's under the city clerk's, under the revenue for the clerk's office, so I'm just gonna bring up the report one more please.
Okay, and is then the clerk's office responsible for the collection or the follow-up? Or, you know, we talked about these, they wrote the ticket, but the ticket's not getting paid, and, you know, I know in particular those commercially legal ones that the neighbors' homes just blowed up, how did those tickets get paid?
So that information, we send, we send our tickets up to the clerk for collection. My information is that most of them have been because we won't issue a building or anything else as physical.
Okay, so there is somewhat of a penalty. Okay, maybe under the fees. I'm not seeing, it would be under Department of These Publics, eleven nine thirty-six? Under Winston? I guess what I'm trying to understand is, are there not many, is not as many violations outstanding as we think, and it's some of these big lared ones that are such a problem. I think we've done, Ken does a great job, but he came with the banks, we can find out which bank it is, he's getting neighbors to, the neighbors see someone changing the locks, we'll run it over to give them the intel. And, you know, part of it is being those eyes on the streets, since we've had a lot of good community partners helping Ken, helping Ken, you and I have talked about this, because, you know, I know that it's something that's very frustrating to both of you, as it is to me. One of the issues too, on the, I guess on the longstanding lies, for example, Gilson Road and Johnson Avenue, it's a project that has pending permits through the planning department, they're issuing permits coming up on the year, the lock sticking. And that blighted property is still standing, so it prompts the neighborhood that this would immediately upon issue permit be demolished, hasn't happened. And I guess I'm looking for tools as to what we can do relative to this situation, and you're gonna buy a blind property, you know the conditions in, we ran into this with fifty-four spring, how many owners do we go through? They buy the blighted property, they do nothing with it, sit on it, and so I'm looking for a tool, particularly when permits are, you know, relief is being requested on the front end, want that blighted property demolished. So Gilson Road comes to mind, and then, for example, we went through a hack the lot, it was a seven twenty-one C, the Chan property on, next to the boardwalk coming to them. That's now we have a foundation, here we've got a foundation to forever get demolished, hard to demolish, but a foundation, project's standing still. So, you know, I'm looking for some progress, and I don't think it's fair for the neighbors to be left with these conditions, and now they're, you know, eligible for light tickets because of this foundation project. And so where are those fines racking up, and what are you doing in those situations where, I guess, there's some, or some assistance on those two particular addresses?
So you brought a very interesting point, so the Gilson Road property, for example, there's several thousand dollars in fines, I've spoke to the owner.
Yeah.
I pleaded with him to knock it going down because he's got all his permits.
Yeah.
He can knock it down and level the site. So there's an instance where tickets are not really helping the problem. Eventually the tickets will get paid, but in this case, they're gonna do nothing to get the product, the building knocked down. So, you know, we'll continue to add the tickets, we're gonna have a captured audience, when somebody comes in for a building permit, those tickets will get paid because we have the leverage, but it's doing nothing to get the building knocked down.
No, it's very frustrating, because on their word, this has been on their word, they gave it to me, and to the neighbors, and to the planning board, they're gonna do this, they're failing, they're looking over their heads, but, okay, mistake made, we're not making this mistake a second time. This other one, you know, went through the zoning board, went through the, went through the process, had two day meetings, their permits expired, came back, we let the project go forward again, particularly because it was a blighted property, we wanted to see the worst house on the street become, you know, a bad house on the street. And so I guess what I'd like offline for you to come back with is, what else can be done that, whether it's on the front end of the permitting act, that they don't go forward with the building in those conditions? We must knock this down, you know, if, if property danger, light, and the plan is to demolish, then I want in the permitting process, the demolition to happen before I have public hearing. I mean, is there, is there any opportunity to make that amendment?
That's something I can have, take a hard look at, having somebody knocking buildings down gets into a part of building code when you're dealing with unsafe and dangerous structures. As opposed to a structure that may need maintenance and is a blighted in the community, I'm not saying that we can't go that route, but it's.
I think we'd all deem Gilson Road a hazard.
What's that?
Gilson Road's a hazard, it's unsafe, they've had multiple reports of people wrecking it, right? We've had more problems, and police have caused to that address over decades, and we finally, the neighborhood's finally hopeful, they would have some progress, and, and sure enough, here we are, it's still standing. And again, it's all about perspective, how many times have I called you about Gilson Road, how many times have I called Mr. Fassins in the planning department, saying, what is going on with this project, and let's bring them before the board? You know, so I'm putting in, exerting a lot of effort, my constituents are getting CC'd on all these emails, so they know the work. But as far as when's the demolition, when's the progress, this is where, you know, governments have their problems, is we need to get this over the finish line done. And again, to Councilor Palmuji's point, the ninety-nine percent debt is clear, and it's just really hard, because this is the frustration, but most definitely, it's the biggest impact to the home values in the area, and it's a detriment to the area. So the rest of downtown, you know, is moving, property values are increasing, and the rest of this neighborhood's silent to the light abatements because of the conditions around it. So I appreciate your effort, Jay, and your response to this, and we're truly grateful you're on the best of places, I guess.
Thank you.
Good luck, Councilor, Councilor Harris. Thank you, thank you. Chair. Jay, I just want to say thank you, you've come, I was a new councillor, you've attended quite a few of my community meetings just recently, out in Marina Bay. And that shows your dedication to the city and to the people, and to your job, and that's admirable, and I applaud you for it. To echo the sentiments of President Hughes and Counselor Palmuji, dealing with problems such as parking on driveways, we have the same, same folks, the same tickets, the same, same, same old story. And I just thank you for always being responsive, going out, and just to mention the dedication, I can remember, especially Ken, Ken went out on a Friday evening, responded to a call from me because of several neighbors on Atlantic, and they were paving over a lawn. And the police got involved, and Ken stayed there, and this was the Friday night of Columbus Day weekend, for, you know, everybody wants to go home on a Friday night on a long weekend, and he stayed there and waited until they dug up that guy. And, and I thought that was, that was extraordinary, and I know that people in that neighborhood appreciated it, and I appreciated everything you do, and thank you for, thank you so much, thank you. John, any further discussion on the motion, Jay, before we take our vote? Thank you again, I have a tremendous amount of respect for your department, and I really, you know. I have a tremendous amount of respect for your department and really, you know, believe it's a central cog in the community's wheel. This is our time obviously to kind of recognize the importance of your department plays in the community. And I know that, you know, you're not out there to come, but you guys are in the trenches, you know, dealing with sometimes ultra controversial situations. Doesn't go unnoticed and, you know, thank you.
Thank you, Councilor. I'm very remiss if I didn't thank my whole staff who worked very hard and to give me the support there. Thank you.
Amen to that. Madam Clerk, if you please, call the roll.
Councilwoman Hume.
Yes.
Council Harris.
Yes.
Council Hughes. Council Fars.
Yes.
Council Lee Ann.
Yes.
Council Hume. Chairman Crowe.
Yes. Five members voting in the affirmative for the PAFs. Thank you very much, Mr. Duka.
Thank you, Councilor.
Next on the agenda is recreation and director of dialogue. Barry, I was thinking at this thought, so with your position in batting work, I always remembered you being ultra patient and almost being last in the gentleman's, so congratulations, you worked your way up.
Worked my way up to third from last.
But I just always picked up on you were just so patient and just, yeah.
Appreciate you, Councilor.
There's a motion on the floor to approve by Councilor Harris. Any discussion on the motion? Councilor Ball.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Welch, I just wanna thank you for all your hard work. Talk about getting a vehicle and going everywhere, you're all willing to sit consistently. Thank you. I just also wanna add that, thank you for looking outside the box this winter with the new time block time, the, the new kids' play area that we had in the former clubhouse over the winter for two to five-year-olds. I mean, we, I took my kids quite a bit of time, so I thank you for opening up something a little bit different that's outside the box and, and put something installed for the city. We talk a lot about parks, we talk a lot about playgrounds, recreation openness space, but the recreation department, you've been heading up for, is it thirty-six years?
Thirty-five.
Thirty-five years, I'm off the year. Thirty-five years that you've invested into the city is, is unnoticed by me, I can tell you that much. We're looking forward to all these activities over the summer with the camps and stuff, but I just wanna say thank you because you extended what we go for six weeks and we extended it for a couple more weeks. I thought that was a huge addition for, for young, you talk, Councilwoman Hume talks about young families coming to the city in Quincy. That was something that we utilized on that Saturday morning that I thought was unbelievable. But thank you for all your hard work. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilor Ball. And just to sort out that sentiment, as you know, I had the privilege of serving on your board for several years, surprised to my running for public office. I'd like to think that those, you know, experiences and interactions that I was able to have on the board has made me a stronger city councilor. And, you know, your advocacy for what you do, did you sit thirty-five years?
Thirty-five years. Thirty-five years as the director of the department for fifty-four.
Pretty tremendous and, you know, the other piece too. And I just think it's so critical, the, the opportunity that you give kids in the summer to come and, and work for you with a summer help job. It's a life lesson in so many ways. It's just, it's good stuff there, so keep up the great work. Nice to see you. Any further discussion on the motion? Steve Dunn, the clerk, if you please, call the roll.
Councilor Ball.
Yes.
Council Harris.
Yes.
Council Hughes.
Yes.
Council Lee Ann.
Yes.
Council Hume.
Yes.
Council Hume. Chairman Crowe.
Yes.
Five members voting. Six members voting.
Chairman, I would just be remiss if I didn't add that it's been a wonderful community to work in, because I can't tell you the last time that this vote wasn't nine to all, as I suspected it would be at the end, that we couldn't do it without the support of the mayor who cooperates originally, but this council has always supported the public recreation programs and that is one of the reasons that makes it easy to stay. So thank you once again.
Thanks, Karen. Good evening. Next on the agenda, Councilors, is Mr. Gladby in the Council on Agent, of Tom.
Can I move forward?
Any questions? Motion to move approval. Any discussion on the motion? Councilor Harris?
Very, very grateful, Tom. Always good to see you. I just wanna say, well, Rachel, I see you at the county center. We do for our seniors, it's, it's trying, so I'm gonna be sure as we, that, Rachel.
Well, thank you very much. I have a tremendous, tremendous staff and a great group of volunteers, so I think. Thank you, Councilor, Councilwoman Hume.
Thank you, just, uh, thank you, just very briefly. Your department, in the library department, I always say every year, it's like taxpayers get the most bang in their buck. You do, and, and batteries department as well. You guys do more programming and it's like every dollar we send you away results in, you know, exponential services that are rendered to, to folks. So keep up the good work. You know, I think you, your department, recreation and the library, if folks aren't using, residents of Quincy aren't using one of those apartments and one of the programs or services that are offered, then you're, you are not getting the bang for your taxpayer at all, because that is really where it's at. That's, that's like you're in the bonus of the prices, right? Right? It's like bonus real, right? You're, those three apartments, so keep up the good work. Thank you very much for your service. Councilor Ball, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just, I just wanna say, thank you for, for all that work that you do over the Council of Angie. The seniors really love when you sing, they really love when you tell jokes. And the relationship that I see amongst the seniors and yourself and your staff, you make it very welcoming over there, the seniors have a great experience with City Quincy. Like, like Councilwoman Hume said, it's unbelievable over there, the amount of work that's been done. But I'm gonna thank you for all your, your work. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilor. And before we take our vote, as you know, Tom says quite frequently, it's his privilege, I represent, you know, the largest mature population in the city. And glowing remarks, consistently glowing remarks from, you know, from the seniors up and more too. One thing I just kinda wanted to, I guess, connect on, play here, is talks about the satellite senior center, right? To allow folks down at the other end of the city, a potential entry point into the programming that's taking place down, you know, down at Katty's center. Is that still a fluid conversation? I know I'm doing work on the backend, where I am to try to screw something up.
Yep.
Yeah, so. It is a fluid conversation still. We have had some programming actually for some of the exercise program, so. Right. That's been going for ages, right?
Correct.
So, I mean, a more formal, you know, satellite program, I think, is, you know, the conversation that I've had with the mayor in the past.
Right.
He seemed to be interested in that, so just wondering if that dialogue is.
It, it is continuing, yeah. We, we probably will, you know, maybe next year we, we'll be in a position to.
Yeah. I know we, you know, just, I don't know if, you know, but we've been really working the public, private, hard to show, with some of the, all of the businesses in the community to get resources so we can screw something up. But where Port Fluff House, as you know, needs, needs help, so before we, of course, talk, right? A program roll up, I think it would make sense to, you know, explore alternative funding sources and stuff, we'll hopefully move that along. But it is something that I'm committed to in my district and I'm working hard on every day, able to, you know, have positive results for everyone. So thank you again for what you do. Is motion on the floor approved? Any further discussion on the motion?[1783.22]